I'd like to call the meeting of the council to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have one under new business.
New business?
One item under new business.
Sure. What is that? On one item? Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as the consent items has written and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to highlight the MUC Commission minutes.
Okay. You want to speak about it, or do you want to?
Just speak about them.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Go ahead, you can speak about the MUC minutes.
Just want to why not make you aware, the last Utilities Commission, there was a very detailed report about the wind turbines, operation of those, and what has been produced for electricity and cost of those coming off in those turbines. I'd like to point out that wind turbines account for about a less than 2% of the utilities' total production, power production. But with the on-growing frustration with turbine number four, has been down for, I believe, three months now due to some failed parts on it. And I know there's been a lot of frustration on the utility side to get that turbine repaired. I guess you can review the report in the packet, or you can contact the utilities if you have further questions on them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of filing those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Kevin, do we have anyone scheduled to speak?
Bob Score.
Mr. Score.
Mayor, council members. Bruce just talked about wind turbines out there, and you're in a committee, correct?
I'm liaison to utilities.
Yeah, right. Okay. Where's the nose cone at right now, do you know?
Last I knew, they reported at the last meeting, it was in Guiman, Oklahoma.
I was told there's some issues, that it's not, that there's a holdup on it, and that Wilmer's sending a truck out to get it. Have you heard anything on that? Kind of throws a little crutch in the gears here again.
No, I have not heard that.
Okay. One other thing is there's some, I need to get clarification, give some clarification out to the public. In the letters that Mr. Little, or, well, the articles that Mr. Little put in the paper last week, says Mr. Hopp noted Minnesota has a goal of 25% energy produced by 2025 should be sourced by renewable energy. I think there's kind of a misconception on that. I think a lot of people in town thought there was some kind of mandate that municipalities had to do. I'm just saying. I hear it from a lot of people, there was a mandate, Bob. I said, I don't think so. So I called MPCA and talked to the Green Cities Director, like up there, and he told me, the first question I said, was there any mandate of any kind, state or federal, for municipalities? And he said, no, there wasn't. It was only energy providers for the grid, like Great River Energy, Big Stone, or Becker, for example. So I'm just wondering why, even when I look in here, made the decision to go with the wind turbines, the mandate was front and center for the utility to make an effort to begin complying. See, that word mandate keeps coming up, and that's not true. So I just want people to know that we didn't know that. This is, the Green Step Program is an information-only setup. There's no rewards, there are no grants. This thing is just a volunteer basis to get the cities to try to conserve and save. Again, there is no mandate. I just want to get that straight, so people understand that. Because these turbines have been a real issue, as you know, and what it says in these articles. So I'll leave that. Another thing I want to clarify is that I've had a couple calls on the Grand A Parade, that the mayor was not acknowledged whatsoever on there. So I watched, it took me three times to watch it, and it sounds like the mayor comes by with nothing said. So I was a little appalled by that. And I said, well, before I really get into this, I want to go down and check it out. So I went down and talked with Rudy at Rack Eight. And we watched that video for about seven to 10 minutes, back and forth, back and forth. And there was, you were acknowledged, you can barely hear it at the beginning, you kind of drowned it out. They say, here, come Mayor Frank Yanish, that's all they said, but it just fades there. I just want to let anybody that was concerned that he wasn't acknowledged, that he was. And I appreciate Rudy Veal taking the time to help me on this and make sure that everything was kosher, because it makes me feel a lot better, so. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else scheduled to speak, Kevin?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on into the presentation of the flags from the VFW Post 1639. Sean or LeAnn, are they here? One or the other? To introduce the...
I think we'll let the presenters introduce themselves.
Good evening, Mayor Yanish, members of the council. My name is Les Canal. I think many of you have seen me before, been a long time. But anyway, I've brought with me my commander of the Post 1639. I'd like to introduce him before I start otherwise. Commander Dell Jerkabett.
Thank you, Les, Mr. Mayor, and council members. As you may know, the VFW here in Wilmer, Minnesota is quite active in the community, and we have been for years. We support youth programs, we make donations to the city, to the fire department, to the hospital, and rescue squad. And May 30th, we got a letter from Sean Christiansen asking the post if they would purchase some flags for the city, which I'm sure would be proudly displayed at special events. And it came up at my post meeting, on behalf of 514 members, Les and I are down here tonight, to make a presentation. So I thank you very much.
Shall we present it to the mayor, or shall we?
Certainly. Certainly, I'll take it.
I would sure appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
We have 72 of them that we give to you, and for the use of the city. And I want to thank you all for what you do for this great city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have one other little comment. I know I'm on mic.
You better go back down. Could you tell us what flags you got, too, Dell?
Yeah, we have 72 flags, and they're not equally distributed. I think there's 24 American flags, 20 POWMA flags, and 14 POWMA flags, and 14 Minnesota flags. I did mention special events. And one of the special events that's coming up for us is in September, September 12th and 13th. Our post is proud to host the State VFW Fall Convention here in Wilmer. It'll bring a lot of people from across the state of Minnesota to Wilmer. And these are members of the VFW, and a long time ago, they probably slept in tents, but they like hotel rooms now. So you're going to see a busy weekend that weekend, and that's a special occasion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we accept that by a resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution. We accept the flags from the VFW.
Second.
And have the mayor draft a note of appreciation from the city for their generous donation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the flags from the VFW, and...
Draft a letter of appreciation.
Send a thank you letter to the post and all those, do we have any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
It is a roll call.
Resolution, accepting. Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. We will move into the Finance Committee report of July 14th. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was not there, so I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Johnson.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. The Finance Committee met on Monday, July 14, 2014, in Conference Room 1 at the city office building. Meeting was called to order at 4:45 PM. There was no public comment offered at the beginning of the meeting. Next item of business was the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Financial Report, and was taken for information only. The MUC General Manager, Wes Hopp, and Finance Director, Tim Hunstead, presented information on the MUC 2013 Financial Report, as well as a summary of the MUC financial status as of May 31, 2014. The statements of revenues and expenses as of December 31, 2013 reflect a net change in the position of a negative $37,610, which is attributable to expenses booked for market value decreases during 2013. It was noted that market values have rebounded to date in 2014, reflecting a positive balance in investment income. Other discussion included an update on the wind turbines, and as I indicated, this matter was for information only. Next item of business was the Transit Joint Powers Agreement. City Clerk Kevin Halliday explained that pursuant to the directive from the Mindot Office of Transit, elected officials from COT and Renville County have been directed to draft a new joint powers agreement, bylaws, and governing policies. The timeline for this new agency is set for an operational start of January 1, 2015. Most agreements, bylaws, and operational policies should be finalized by August 2014, submission deadlines for the 2015 grant funding applications. Assets, bus titles, and cash reserves will be combined, and existing employees will be hired by this new transit agency. The CAT Transit Director will take the lead role, with the Renville County Transit Director as the assistant. Attrition will be the only planned reduction in staff, if any. The estimated cost-sharing arrangement for the new transit entity will be one-third each for the city of Wilmer, Canoea County, and Renville County. This final draft of the new joint powers agreement presented to the committee has been approved by the attorneys for Renville County, Canoea County, and the city of Wilmer and CAT, and needs to be ratified by the county board and the Wilmer City Council. Additionally, two council members need to be appointed to represent the city on the new transit board as well. Following discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the new Transit Joint Powers Agreement. And I would introduce that resolution to this body at this time.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign the agreement. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Do we appoint those people now?
Yeah, following the introduction of that resolution at the meeting, a motion was made, seconded, and it passed to appoint the existing two council members that currently represent the city on the existing CAT board to the new transit board, those members being Bruce DeBleek and Rick Fagerly. And at this time, I would introduce that motion to this body.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to appoint Bruce DeBleek and Rick Fagerly to the board of the Transit Joint Powers Board. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
It's just a main motion.
It is a main motion?
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
The next item of business was a sale, dealt with the sale of Fire Engine 8. Fire Chief Gary Hendrickson explained that the fire department recently took delivery of the new ladder truck, which replaces the 1991 E1 Hush truck, which is known as Engine 8. The town of Clare City has offered $25,000 to purchase Engine 8. Another option would be to retain Engine 8 as a backup engine or for use in another department. However, the costs of regular maintenance need to be taken into consideration for a fire truck that is not used regularly. Consequently, staff's recommendation is to sell Engine 8 to Clare City for the sum of $25,000. And following discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution approving the sale of the 1991 E1 Hush fire truck, Engine 8, to the town of Clare City for $25,000. And I would introduce that motion to this body at this time.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the sale of Engine Number 8 to Clare City, Minnesota, for the sum of $25,000. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one comment. The new fire engine, which is much more versatile and much more appropriate for the city's use, I understand is going to be a great piece of equipment for fire safety in our community, and it's costing us about $250,000 or more, correct?
Councilmember Ammon, the cost of the new ladder truck that we purchased was $610,000.
Okay, owes way off. And when you look at the value of $25,000, I know it's shocking, I don't, I'm not an expert on vehicles by any means, but I'm just wondering in the future, it seems like we've done this in the past, we've always been receptive to selling the fire trucks to the other surrounding fire departments, and I think that's great. I'm just curious if in the future, it might be possible, prior, since we have the new equipment schedule in our capital improvement plan, that if, prior to us recommending the purchase, that we might maybe solicit bids or offers from other surrounding communities that might be interested in purchasing our equipment. We've only had one offer, maybe there are others around, too. I don't know if that's something you've considered, or is something that's currently being done, but I was just curious if you had any response to that.
Councilwoman Ammon, the truck was also listed on Brimley Fire, which is a online dealership to assist us in selling the particular vehicle. That vehicle also was, we dealt with the current manufacturer of the new truck, and he gave it a value of about $13,000.
Yeah.
You may have received the $200,000 from the previous truck. Engine 8 was $197,000.
Mm-hmm.
Hence, I thought it was a pretty good return of 25 years of use and $25,000 return.
Yeah.
So I thought it turned out pretty well.
Okay. Well, thanks for the explanation, just wanted to, you had to explain that. Appreciate the time.
You're welcome.
Is there further discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're talking about that truck, there's a, I don't know what the word is, commissioning isn't the word, but I believe it's next Thursday evening, maybe Chief, you could explain that, so we can get the public to come out and see it.
Yes, Councilman Anderson. There is, it's a housing ceremony, July 31st, next Thursday, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM at the fire station. It's an opportunity for the public to come out, take a look at their investment. In commemoration of the vehicle, we've also produced a challenge coin. So we invited, of course, council and the mayor, as well as surrounding departments to take a look at that truck. So it doesn't happen very often that we do take delivery of a new piece of a truck, a new truck, so therefore, we want to make sure that it was a big deal, and everyone had an opportunity to take a look at it.
Good. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that passes.
Next item of business was the School Resource Officer Agreement for the period of 2014 to 2017. Police Chief Jim Felt explained that Wilmer schools have contracted with the Wilmer Police Department for school resource officers for over 15 years. The most recent three-year contract concluded in June, which was for three officers assigned during the school year to the Wilmer High School, Middle School, and Alternative Learning Center in elementary schools. Staff is proposing a new agreement for 2014 to 2017, incorporating an increase of $33,000 over the three-year period. Following discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute the 2014 to 2017 School Resource Officers Agreement as presented. And I would introduce that resolution at this time.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to request approval of the proposed contract for school resource officers, SROs, with Wilmer's Public Schools for 2015 to 2017, asserting discussion on that. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
The next item of business dealt with the general obligation improvement bonds for 2014 B project. Finance Director Steve Okens explained that staff was directed to work with the local lending institutions to develop a negotiated sale of $1 million for funding for the 2014 street improvements. Results show that by utilizing local options, the interest rate will be 2.17%, which is slightly higher than the metro rate. However, there are less underwriting costs involved, so overall expenditures will be similar to transitional bonding expenses. Staff is recommending that the council proceed with the local funding option. Following discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, to introduce a resolution authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute the agreements for the negotiated sale of $1 million of general obligation improvement bonds, 2014 B, through local lending institutions as presented for financing the 2014 street improvements. And I would introduce that resolution at this time.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to authorize the mayor and city administrator to finalize the execution of agreements for the negotiated sale of $1 million of general obligation improvement bonds, 2014 B, for the financing of the 2014 street improvements. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries.
Next item of business was a report on the 2013 General Fund. Staff presented the preliminary, December 31, 2013, General Fund revenues and expenditures, noting that more detail will be brought to the committee in the near future to authorize budget overages. The matter, this matter was for information only. There was no old business, and under new business, Councilmember DeBleek indicated that Dan Grothas had spent, or had sent an email to council members last weekend regarding agricultural land owned by the city. It was decided that that email would be forwarded on to the city administrator's office to issue a response and/or forward to the appropriate staff to address the issues raised by Mr. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 5:33 PM. And if there's no further discussion or questions, I would move to adopt those minutes.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report of July 14th. Is there any discussion on that? Roll call? Or is that a motion?
Just a standard motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll move into the Public Works Safety Committee report. Councilman Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet Public Works Public Safety on July 15th at 4:45 PM. Actually, it was 4:55 PM. There were no public comments, so we got on with the next item, which was the 2014 Consultant Engineering Services, which is a resolution. Our Director, Sean Christiansen, brought forth approval. For approval, the estimated fees associated with the design, materials, testing, and construction services provided by Bolton &amp; Mink, and to enter into a consultant service contract with them. Clarification was given by Christiansen on the estimated fees calculated being included in the existing projects on the bonding bid. Following some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, for the following, and I will introduce the resolution, to approve the estimated fees and enter into a consultant agreement with Bolton &amp; Mink for the 2014 Consultant Engineering Services.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to approve the estimated fees associated with the design, materials, testing, materials testing, and construction services provided by Bolton &amp; Mink, and entered into a consultant service contract. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Our next item was under old business. Once again, our Director, Sean Christiansen, presented information on the retention ponds effectiveness and the recent storms we've had this summer. It was noted that the ponds did exactly what they were designed to do, with detaining water to let the storm drain system catch up with excess flow of rainfall to the outfall structure. The official rainfall for the month of June was 10.86 inches. Also, the committee discussed the five-year street improvement plan that uses the pavement management program established in 1995 that rates the city streets every two years. The streets are assigned a numerical designation on a scale from 0 to 100, with 0 being the gravel road condition, to 100 being brand-new pavement. The ratings of each street are then kept in a database to determine when and what type of repairs needed. When a street is rated in the vicinity of 71 to 99, it is eligible for a seal code. If the rating is the range of 60, the street would be in the condition needing a mill and overlay. At a rating of 60 or less, the street would be considered for reconstruction. We have over 130 miles of street within the city. Currently, 30.4 miles are rated at 61 to 75, needing seal coating. 23.6 miles are rated at 60 or less. The committee questioned the city's liability when a street project is removed from the improvement program, and the fact that it may possibly deteriorate the street faster without proposed needed maintenance and repairs. The committee also questioned whether the pavement management program is a formally adopted policy of the city. Our engineer, Mr. Christiansen, stated he would look into it further to see if it was adopted by the council at any point in time in the past. Also, an update on the potholes was presented by Public Works Superintendent Scott Latibar. He attended the meeting and stated that they began patching on May 29th. And of the 31 days available so far, the seizing 18 days have been used to patch, with a total of 281 tons of hot mix. There are 21 street cuts also being patched, where the water and sewer lines were repaired this past winter. There will be continued patching... There will be continued patching as the weather allows, and the 2014 seal coating project is completed, and the crack sealing project is just over half done for the year. Also, our Public Works Superintendent, Mr. Leibor, explained the mosquito spraying program to our committee. To date, the entire city's been sprayed four times, while also spraying at Robins Island Baker Field. In addition to the spraying, the city applies Larbicide and Stagnant Surface Water, primarily stormwater ponds. Our Public Works Director, Mr. Christensen, again presented his findings on the possibility of trial areas of foam used under roadways. Christensen consulted with the other engineers, with other engineers in the region while researching the topic. With research and other professional opinions combined, he stated he cannot recommend the use of foam under any city streets in Wilmer. His research showed the foam caused numerous inherent issues based on the insulated characteristics, as well as the additional cost to install it at the depth required. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following. I voted against this motion, but I will introduce it as the chair of the committee. The motion states, "To support the city engineer's recommendation to not use foam under city streets and remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from any further discussions."
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. To what?
"To support the city engineer's recommendation to not use foam under city streets and remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from any further discussions." Period.
Is that a resolution or a motion?
Standard main motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have some concerns about this motion. We were urged by a group of citizens, and later the Charter Commission itself, to adopt rules of procedure for our, for the conduct of our business. And we did. We adopted the parliamentary rules found in this book entitled "The Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure." And, well, I think for purposes, for educational purposes, I'd like to point out to this body that it's improper to restrict comments or discussions about matters that come before this body. And I think that makes this motion improper. On page nine of our parliamentary procedure that we adopted, there's a paragraph entitled "The Right of Discussion," and it reads as follows. "Full and free discussion of every proposition presented for the decision or for decision is an established right of members. Each member of the Assembly has the right to speak freely without interruption or interference, provided that the rules are observed. The right of members to have their say or to have their day in court is as important as their right to vote."
Mayor Yanis.
And I think we, you know, not only is this, I think, derived from our First Amendment rights of free speech, but especially a governing body has to have free and open discussion of all matters. Now, there are parliamentary rules, but to pass a motion limiting discussion or limiting a council member's right to state or participate in discussions, even if it might be contrary to what some of the other members want to discuss, I don't think it's proper at all.
Mayor Yanis.
Councilwoman.
I will amend the motion to simply read, "To support the city engineer's recommendation not to use foam under city streets."
Second. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we're putting foam under now, so we don't need a motion. We have no plans to do it.
That was Councilmember, if you read the agenda, it was to find test areas to do foam. Our city engineer has done research. He's presented it also to Councilmember Christensen and to the entire committee, and I think he's prepared to talk about it again tonight. And I think that we should accept his recommendation from the work that he did, that it is not the correct thing for our city, and that was strictly what I'm trying to get to, and for us to be able to accept staff's recommendation and to move on, because this gets brought up at Public Works Committee on a regular basis. It has since I came on the council. And we'd have, it was addressed by our previous interim engineer. It has been addressed by our current engineer, and so my request for the motion is simply allow us to accept the fact, accept our staff's recommendation to accept this and move on.
Do you have a comment? Let's go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a problem with the city engineer's position on this, at this time. But it would point out that, you know, technologies change over time. I don't know, I'm no expert. I defer to Sean Christensen on the issue at this time. But I would also point out and remind us all that, you know, for I don't know how many hundreds of years, we thought the earth was flat. We no longer believe that. But we did for a long, long time, so I, and I think that the purpose of this motion still sounds like it's to limit discussion. I agree with Councilmember Fagerly's remarks or comments about there's no, no desire at this point, or no roads that we intend to do anything different than what our city engineers recommended, so.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
Perhaps I could ask Councilmember, our city engineer, Mr. Christensen, to speak to this matter at this time.
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, I'm prepared to answer any questions you may have. I have done quite a bit of research. In fact, oh, weeks before the, when Councilmember Christensen asked me to, which I'm gladly to do for anybody that has, you know, ideas, thoughts, plans, that they've seen done or heard done or whatever, I'm more than willing to do that at any time. And just after, based on the research I've done and continue to do at this time, it's not, I can't recommend it under the streets in city Wilmer.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Fagerly.
Thank you, Sean, for stating that, and I agree at this time. It's not something we should do. I've also learned that you never say never, because things do change. But we did have an engineer in here that worked on the waste treatment plant, Rhonda, somebody, I can't remember the engineering firm.
Donahue.
She was done.
Donahue Associates.
She said she worked for the city of Minneapolis, and they used foam extensively under their walking paths. So that might be different than, than streets. But it is being done, and she said it made a big difference, so. And I'm not an engineer, so.
Councilman Anderson?
I'm wondering, I'd like city attorney's input on the motion and the amendment based on what Councilmember Johnson is saying. Are we, where are we going here?
Mayor Yanis, Councilmember Anderson, I agree with Councilmember Johnson's objection to the original motion. I don't think it's proper to restrict items that can be debated in meetings. However, I don't see any problem with the motion as amended. Certainly, it's fine for the council if it so chooses to pass a motion to not use foam under city streets. That, I think, would settle the question for now. The council could always decide differently in the future. I mean, I don't think this restricts future options. If it becomes a recommendation at some point, or something the council wants to do at some point to use foam, it could certainly vote to do it at that time.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how many of the council people or the mayor have Googled Geofoam, but it's used worldwide and has been actually since the 60s. I'm going to read a statement here from one of the firms that uses Geofoam. Just, "Today, in addition to transportation projects, EPS Geofoam is used in a variety of civil engineering applications where its unique performance characteristics have made it the material of choice within the engineering community worldwide. I dug in two wells to two different foundations in the last two weeks. Guess what the well drillers put on top of the water lines that go to the house if they go under a street, a sidewalk, or a driveway? And the water lines are down six feet. This past year, we witnessed 11 feet of frost. Guess what they put on the water lines? Foam." Guess what they put on the septic drains going from the house to the tanks? So they don't freeze in the wintertime. Foam. Guess what contractors are putting below driveways, so they don't heave up and down next to the garage? Foam. Sidewalks also. The building code allows for styrofoam to be used for shallow frost footings. You only have to go down 16 inches, go away from the building four feet with two to four inches of foam. Guess what it does? Keeps it from freezing. Geofoam is mostly used where we have terrible soil, or where terrible soil conditions exist. The city of Wilmer sits on a slew. Just drive around in the spring and follow a bus or a garbage truck, because they're exempt from road restrictions. You follow them and watch the streets go like this. That ruins our city streets. I know what works. I think the motion was made to shut me up, and I don't like it, because I choose to follow the League of Minnesota Cities, which says an elected person's number-one priority is to participate, ask questions. I think the motion doesn't have any merit, and I will vote against it.
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
It's exactly, what Mr. Christensen just went through is exactly why I made the motion. We asked our city engineer to do research. He's talked to four consulting firms, 10 cities, along with the Minnesota Department of Transportation, and he has given us his best recommendation that, now, Ron, Mr. Christensen here at the table is a contractor, and maybe it has applications in his line of work, but at the city council level, I believe we should respect our city engineer's recommendation and his work. And Councilmember Christensen is not doing that. And so I am asking this council to accept the recommendation of our city engineer and the homework that he's done, to put this issue to rest for right now. If the world changes, or things change, or whatever, we can come back and look to it again. I believe it's also, the things that I've looked at talk about black ice. They talk about extra expense. We have our work cut out to do the streets, and we should be looking at other alternatives. And I again ask for this motion to be passed to support our staff's recommendation.
I have a question for the attorney. Are we setting a precedent by doing this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think it's simply, at this point, as amended, the motion is presenting a policy question to the council, and it can either pass the motion and set that policy, which would be to not use foam, or vote against it, in which case you're right where you were before this issue came up. I don't think you need to worry about a precedent being set. You're just weighing in on a policy question that's come before you.
Councilman Johnson, did you have a point?
Well, my concern is about the process. As I indicated, I don't care whether it's foam or, you know, what color gravel we use under our paved streets. It doesn't matter to me. I leave that up to the city engineer. But I also agree with Councilmember Fagerly. There's no issue here in front of us. We don't, there's no, the city engineer isn't recommending the use of any foam anywhere. I don't know what the purpose of the resolution is, frankly, or the motion, excuse me.
Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you. You know, we're, this is an awkward spot. I respect all the work that Councilmember Christensen has done on this, and we've talked about it. I also respect our professional engineer and his colleagues in the field. I wish we didn't, I wish it hadn't come to a vote. I wish we could have just worked this out and, and let it take care of itself when it was appropriate. But the city engineer isn't going to recommend using foam, so I don't know how we can proceed any other way until technology changes or something changes. I'm going to go along with the wishes of the city engineer.
Do we need a vote on this?
Yes, Mayor. Motion's been made and seconded, so it should be voted on.
Okay.
It was an amendment.
Yeah, we got an amendment first.
Excuse me, correct. Thank you.
Could you read the amendment to me?
Well, the original motion is to support the city engineer's recommendation to not use foam under city streets and remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from any further discussions. The amendment, then, is just to strike the words, "And remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from any further discussions."
Councilman, or Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mr. Fagerly also that, and at the meeting, I stated, I don't think we need a motion on this, but someone else thought otherwise. I think it's kind of silly, because we're not using foam presently, and to think about it down the road is not silly. I don't, well, think we need it.
Do we take a resolution or?
Just a main vote on the amendment to strike those words.
The amendment to strike those words, do we have a motion?
We have.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
No.
Rule call? Rule call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
No.
Amen.
No.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
And Fagerly.
No.
Three ayes, four nays. The amendment fails.
Okay, and then we vote on the original? And that was?
"To support the recommendation of the city engineer to not use foam under city streets and to remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from further discussions."
Is there any further discussion? Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I would suggest perhaps the moving party would consider withdrawing the motion, which our rules permit.
No.
All those in favor say aye? Go ahead. Question, DeBlick, I'm sorry.
Question of our city attorney on the wording of that. There's that proper wording with, as far as Councilmember Johnson's point, that it limits discussion on the, on the use of foam.
I'm just simply going by what was in the minutes, and that was what was read here, and the motion was introduced. The original motion was to not use foam under city streets and remove the possibility of trial areas of foam from any further discussions. And that language does appear to be attempting to limit future debate on the issue, which would be inappropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor?
Just a comment here. I read through the minutes earlier, and I was quite surprised too. I had no time to endorse any motion or support any motion from any council person to limit debate from any individual on a perspective that he or she might think is correct, or we should reconsider. That's what our job is, to not be boxed, and you have to have an open eye and an open viewpoint on how to do things. And this isn't saying that we don't agree with our city engineers, that why would we box ourselves in to saying no, to not ever putting foam down when things change? I just want to make the comment. So I think this whole thing is just a little mundane, myself. I respect everybody in the council, their opinion, even if I don't agree with it. I respect everybody in the council and their opinion, even if I don't agree with it.
Any further discussion? And that would be a motion?
Basic motion.
All those in favor say aye? Those opposed say no?
No.
That motion fails.
At this time, councilman Johnson sat in for the absent councilman Amen. Our chief of police, Mr. Felton, was at the meeting, and he noted that the jail census for July 15th was 123, and the calls for service for the previous two weeks totaled 765. The majority of the calls are for traffic, followed by theft and damage to property. There will be extra patrol assigned strictly for Sunshine, which was this past weekend, and a no-vacation policy has been put into place for that time period. Also, Sunshine, the event will be billed for the hours of the overtime shifts of the patrol provided to reimburse the city, so that our police department does get paid from Sunshine Festival to police the facility or the event. Item number five on a new business, councilmember Doc had spoke about the recent controlled burn by the fire department questioning when it will be completed and when the hole will be filled in. The fire chief will be contacted to find a completion date, and I don't know if he contacted you or you contacted him, Mr. Nixon, but.
It's filled.
Mayor Yanis and councilman Christensen, I was not contacted regarding the hole, but I believe it was finished today. Next item, I questioned what happened to the Welcome to Wilmer sign on the north side of Wilmer as you come in. As you can see, it's down, and I was informed that an accident caused that thing to come down, and I didn't read it in the paper, so I was uninformed. That was the last item of business. If there's no further business come before the committee, there was no further business come before the committee, so we adjourned at 5:48 PM. And if there are any questions or comments, I would answer them now. There was a file, moved the file to minutes.
Second. The motion has been made, and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report of July 15, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Is there any new business?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to review the current process for requests from businesses who are asking for financial assistance or incentives from the City of Wilmer and develop a written policy.
I'll second that for a discussion.
What does that mean?
Should I read it again?
No, I would like you to elaborate what you mean in those two sentences.
Right now, I think there's some things that should be done that are not being done, and this is not based on fault or blame of anybody, but I have individuals in the last six years who have come up to me after the fact and stated that their requests were not heard by the council or by the appropriate committee for requesting assistance for building and expanding this community, and that, I believe, simple things such as the process should be reviewed. I know that it may be confidential, and that's fine, but I think the process should be in a written form. So if there's any requests, the request should be based on a need, and I think we can develop a strategy and a formula and a simple form so that we're informed of the request, what the impact is going to be in our community, what the financial cost to the citizens are going to be prior to it being brought up with a recommendation from staff. I think we should be informed as a team on this. It can be part of the process, and I think it might kind of even out the current process that we have, which is a little cumbersome and it gets political. I just think information is the way we should be doing this, and that's the reason why I'd like to refer to the appropriate committee, whether it be community development or labor, to discuss it. And maybe the policy we have now is fine, but I don't think it's really defined in a written form, and I think it would just help with future development in the city. So when a person comes in, there's a form that's filled out, and prior to yes or no decision on assistance with tax enforcement financing or tax abatement or whatever, that that whole process has to be written down and evaluated and given to the committee to consider, because we are the decision makers who have to make the tax choice of taxing our citizens or not taxing our citizens. And we have to weigh the pros and cons of it. It shouldn't be left up to a few individuals. I think we should be involved, all of us as a process, so we understand it more completely. And I think it deserves some good discussion, and I'd welcome that. That's the guts of the motion.
Go ahead, councilman.
Further clarification, councilman Amen, your intent is just to refer this to a committee?
Sure.
Is that what you're talking about for the discussions?
Yeah, for discussion implementation, if that's what the committee comes up with. Some of those topics, if I may elaborate, Mr. Blake, that representatives be present at all the committee meetings and city council meetings that they make the request publicly, that there is a written request, not an oral request, and then all sudden, the staff recommends, I want to see a written request from an individual based on their needs and what type of assistance they're going to be needing. Some of this can be done, I think, prior to getting to the committee that can be discussed, and they can be meeting with their community development director, discuss what the options are. I don't think any decision should be made arbitrarily by one or two individuals, not the elected body, to refuse or to accept or to deny the application or the request. I think every request, whether it's a small business person with two employees or up to 500, they should all be considered in the same manner.
Mayor Yanis?
Go ahead.
So just for the clarification, you're talking about community development kinds of requests? You're not talking about budget requests from, I mean, for like?
No.
Current things we're funding? You're talking about business?
This is about how to conduct business in the city.
So perhaps we should, we should be reviewing what we do first of all before we try to establish something new, because I think there is a process in place, is there not?
There is a current process in place, but it's not defined. It's not written. I don't think it's fully understood. I think a written policy is in form, we're policymakers, and we should go ahead and consider it.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. Just a further clarification, not to belabor this, but what you just went through there would be, that wasn't part of the motion, all of that stuff. That's just your ideas. Is that correct?
Those are some thoughts, and since I'm not going to, it's probably more than likely going to go to community development, because it's Mr. Peterson.
But the motion is just to send it, not with all of the, that's not stipulated.
Those are just some ideas or reasons why.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure.
Nelson wanted. It's just simply review the current process for requests from businesses who are requesting for financial assistance, incentives or assistance from the City of Wilmer and develop a written policy.
Okay.
Mayor Yanis?
Councilman?
Mr. Peterson isn't here tonight. Perhaps it would be helpful to have him come and do a presentation with how the process works right now to the city council before we refer it to committee, just to hear, so the council as a whole can hear what the actual process is and the steps that people go through, when something is public, when it's not public. Maybe we could put that, ask to have that on the agenda before the committee starts to look at this.
Isn't that kind of backwards, how we do it, Audrey? Usually goes committee first, this committee?
I'm just asking to review our current policy before we ask a committee to do a new policy when we don't even know for sure what the process is right now. So before we go through that, why do we not want to know what we're doing now?
Ms. Nelson, it's just a simple request to review our current process. That's it. Just, we should always be reviewing.
I thought your motion was to establish new policy.
Yes, and develop a written policy.
Why do we not want to know what our current one is right now?
We don't have a written policy.
Let, I'm asking for Mr. Peterson to come and speak to us with what the process is right now.
How do I handle this?
We can certainly do both. I mean, you know, it's been discussed, and the policies have been reviewed at community development fairly recently. I believe I'm looking at the chair for, I think, October of the fall of last year, fall of 2013, I believe they were reviewed. I believe they were reviewed even in the spring of this year, but we can certainly review those again, and Mr. Peterson can come and give a presentation as well to the full council. Both can be done.
I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Charlene. I think we also maybe want to consider whose authority it is to accept or deny these, and who has that current negotiating capabilities and who's been given that. I think that's been revised in the personnel profiles, some of the individuals with staff, and I think that should be reviewed also.
Go ahead, councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is the motion to send it to committee to discuss the policy, or is it the motion for the policy, the new policy? Which one is it?
The motion reads, "Review the current process for requests from businesses who are asking for financial incentives or assistance from the City of Wilmer and develop a written policy," because we don't have one right now.
Okay, and I understand, okay, I understand then. And I agree.
So we have a motion in front of the council to do as Mr. Amen suggests?
I would like the motion to be read one more time, and if we could clarify where that, where it's going to go, if it's going to go to community development.
Kevin, could you read that motion to us, please?
Well, "I have to review the current process for requests from businesses who are receiving assistance from the City of Wilmer and develop a written policy."
I might want to add the word "asking," who are asking for assistance, financial incentives, not getting, but who are asking or requesting. That's what I had read earlier. Kevin, thank you.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. So we'll talk about that at the?
Community Development, the appropriate committee.
Community Development meeting?
Mayor Yanis?
Yes.
Is it possible for Bruce to come and do that presentation at the next meeting?
I think he will, yes. Let's ask him.
Okay.
Announcements of the council committee meeting dates. Finance committee?
Finance committee will meet Monday, the 28th, at 4:45.
Labor, Mr. Councilman Amen?
No meeting scheduled yet, soon, I hope.
Public Works, councilman Christensen?
Tuesday, July 29th, 4:45.
And Community Development, councilman Fagerly?
Thursday, July 31st, 4:45 at City Hall. And then can I also ask Charlene, you tell Bruce I'd like to go over the meter fees for electricity and sewer, because there's some property owners downtown that are a little bit upset.
We can talk about that.
Thank you.
I will introduce, go ahead.
You under announcements?
Announcements?
Yeah, just want to remind everybody that the 2040 Things to Do Committee is going to be showing a movie at the Dorothy Olsen Aquatic Center, I believe it starts at dusk on Wednesday, the 23rd. And I believe there's also a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Aquatic Center at 10:00 AM that morning as well, so there'll be events pretty much all day at the Aquatic Center on Wednesday.
That's correct.
Thank you. We will introduce.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. We are adjourned.